We order scan for the country of legends.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The record show that all board members are present. Our next number four on the agenda is the board showcase and we will give out spring commendations.
Hi, everybody who's here. Thanks for coming this evening. It's one of our favorite things that we get to do every year is find ways to recognize some of our very talented students and student athletes. And we have a tradition here in Princeton of the board providing commendations for student athletes that achieve the highest honor in athletics for high in in high school. And those participating in the state tournament are received accommodation from our school board. You put yourself out there every single day. And you represent the Tigers at the highest level and we appreciate you and we thank you for that. And you represent us very well. Tonight, we're recognizing some of our state participants in track and field, in golf and adapted bowling. And we'll start with our track and field and I'm thankful that we have our coach here and it's a tradition also to allow our coach to hand out the certificates. And Coach, if you'd stand over here and our board members would, if you stand up and and handshake, give a handshake to our person that we're honoring.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And as you said, we coaches and the parents are proud of how well these athletes represented the school and their district down at the state track meet. Thank you for recognizing them. One of the few opportunities where, you know, we all know that the wins and losses aren't the big thing. It's the lessons they learn along the way. This is a great example where they learned that hard work, dedication and perseverance pays off because it certainly did for this. We had five people make it and when the girl that made it in the high jump, Kate Gross is not here tonight. But we have two of our really team members because we have the four by four relay team make it to the state meet. And here today is Adam Trader. I don't suppose a board member must take him off in a race outside in the parking. I have my flip flops on. So other athletes, I mentioned Kate Gross in the high jump. The other athletes were on the relay team, Nick and Mace. And Joan Abaiden, then Joan Abaiden also was in the state meet in the 400 meter dash as well. So I just leave me. Thank you.
Okay. We'd also like to recognize our state participants in the golf tournament. It doesn't appear that we have any of our participants here for for golf, but we wanted to recognize them by saying their name. Lucas Ostland, Chase Grant, Luke Duffner, Liam Duffner, Noah Tim, and Jacob Patnold. So we'll give them a hand. And for adapted bowling, we're happy to recognize Cody Wilson, Victoria Greenway, and Anna Cavalier. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
There are no citizen comments, so we will move on to board member committee reports. We'll start with that. I have had a community ed, graduation, and policy.
Graduation and policy.
I had a graduation. I had a C bin business partnership meeting trying to encourage some extra revenue for C, C general meeting and a C regional meeting in Cambridge and agenda plan.
I have nothing to report.
All I had was a general plan. And channel.
That was I had was trade.
And there's no student council member, so we'll launch a superintendent's report.
Hello, board. It's great to see you on this fine June afternoon in the summer. I want to thank you all for participating in our time honored tradition of graduation. That was a great event to have 200 plus students go off into the world and we're so proud of them. Just want to share some things that are happening right now in the district. Our site leadership teams at each of our sites are convening and our site leadership teams are made up of our staff members and we really believe in a participatory leadership model where where staff members have lots of influence in terms of what our plan is. And they have.
My house more.
We apologize for leaving. We went to the run door.
Well, let's let's put the timeout.
You'll have to leave now.
We came on her quickly and then Adam Young also were the alternates on the relay team.
Okay, so who am I getting the certificate for? It's not, he doesn't have. Okay. Well, we need to, we need to give him a clap and you need to come and get your handshake by by all of our.
Are there any more backs there? We'll keep an eye.
Yeah, you know, we put some signs out there. I'm sorry.
When we see somebody who's perky, maybe just ignore it. We're like, we tried to view and they're all lost, but we're good now.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for remembering that. All right. Have a great summer. Thank you. Okay, so time in. I I just wanted to share that our leadership team, basically what they do is they work to put together an action plan, action steps and strategies for us to meet our goals, right? And each of our sites follow our district continuous improvement plan and have action steps as it relates to student learning, a positive climate and culture and MTSS, right? And we talk about those things all the time. So we have a district action plan and each of the sites then work together to do that. One of the things that our site leadership teams do is they do a data walk. So they analyze all of the different data that we have available to us related to student learning. And they use that to to let data to drive some of the decisions that we make because in a in an action plan, we can't pick on every single strategy in the world. We need to pick out the most effective and target certain areas that we think that will have the most impact. So that work has been happening on each of the sites. Want the board to know that we are starting E S Y summer school and Tiger Club has been underway and we have a huge number of students in in Tiger Club. We actually have more demand than right now we're able to take on. So that's something that we'll continue to problem solve to see if there's some ways that we can increase our capacity for Tiger Club. One of the biggest barriers that we're having in talking with Delroy is finding enough candidates to work, qualified candidates to work in that program. So we're constantly looking for for good people. And then we're doing lots of planning for next year, lots of our staff development planning. We have not brought in outside speaker per se to our district for several years. And that is something that we think is going to change for next year. So one of the things we really want to do is is provide a a gift to our team members to start the school year off by having an uplifting, motivating kind of a speaker to start the year off. And there is a person that we found that we think is going to be pretty, pretty special and we'll certainly hope that you'll be able to attend that. And I'll provide more details when we get closer. So lots of planning for next year. And then what I'm I'm also in the middle of doing some evaluations of all of our all of the administrators that are direct reports to me. So that work will continue to happen in the next several weeks. So it's it's a little bit different time. Our team members work really hard and I really encourage them to take the vacation days that they have owed to them in their contracts. And so it's just, you know, juggling calendars to find days that everybody's around. But it's been a good start. So thank you.
We'll move on to approving the agenda. Motion made by Chad. There's second, second by Eric makes any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Discuss and act on previous board meetings minutes from May 17th. For a motion to approve those minutes. Motion made by Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Oppose same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on to approving the consent agenda. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda. So motion made by Deb. Second by Chad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. We will now go down to information and we will have a presentation on long range planning update and Vaughn, I think that if you were.
So I'll just have a couple of comments here to set the stage. Emily, if you can hear me, can you say yes if you do?
Yep, I'm here.
Get an email that I just sent you?
Yes, I did. I got him.
End of the meeting. So there's three documents that were provided to me and I'll let Vaughn will tell you which one he wants on the screen when he gets up to talk.
Okay, sounds good.
We're thankful to have representatives from Wold and ICS with us this evening to discuss long range planning and the ongoing needs that we have in the school district. You know, the the board's been talking and discussing these needs for several times, several several years. And just a recap, I don't need to do this. You will aware that we had a referendum that failed that was addressing the many needs that were identified. We went through an extensive process where community members weighed in and provided their input. We were disappointed that that referendum failed, but all of those needs that were identified continue to exist. We, the board has asked us to review alternative methods to possibly get some smaller projects done. And that's what we're going to share with you today. There's a one way that we possibly can do that and that would be through using a funding stream called a lease levy. And then combining that with possible long, long range or long term facility maintenance plans and capital and possible proceeds from the sale of land that could get us a certain dollar amount. If that's something that we cannot do, the board would always have the option to go back up to the borders for another referendum. Okay? So as we continued to listen and we took a look at the idea that there's no way that we could get all of the projects done that were in the original referendum that failed. We need to like take a look at what were the biggest, most priority areas. And what I was hearing from the board and other stakeholders was that the career technical education area at the high school was a significant need and also finding solutions for more private restroom options for high school students. Those were two of the things that kind of bubbled up through some of our discussions. I will let the board know that right now, the estimated dollar amount that we potentially could have through the funding streams that I mentioned before with lease levy and capital and those kinds of things would be approximately $5 million or five, five, 5.5 million dollars. The thing that is is really difficult is now is a very difficult time in the fact that interest rates are going up. So I could have, if if I was presenting to you, you know, two months ago, we would probably be more confident to say 5.5 million. Now today, you know, we're not confident to say that it might be more of a five million or a little bit more than that. Okay, we're not able to stretch things as much as we would have if interest rates were lower. Okay, so all of those things are estimates and variables. So with that, I will turn it over to Vaughn.
Sure.
Okay.
Hi, Emily. Can we take a look at the master plan P D S? So you have three documents. The problem with handing documents out is always you jump right to the end and start looking at stuff and trying to figure out what it is. So let me just walk you through it. The idea behind referendum is not necessarily this is the plan you're going to execute, but it's really you have to look at is this is a master plan for how things might go at the high school. It's why it's diagrammatic as opposed to floor plans really. But if you back up from that and had we passed a referendum, we would be implementing all this. Master plan is really about helping guide short term decisions as you work towards what it might be in the future. And so as we looked at the plans and and some of the needs and we're talking with the administration, the C T became the item there. Well, the problem with the master plan, I'll step over here. Could you scroll down a little bit to the bottom of Emily's part? Is that in the master plan, the idea was always replace those I'll call them portable buildings or the shop buildings that have been in place since I was in high school back there. That's the long term need is to get rid of those. And we had looked at building about a 12,000 square foot C T shop expansion in that area. $5 million doesn't build 12,000 square feet of shops. So then we said, okay, well, what could you do in the short term to move you towards that goal? We looked at some different options. We looked at building maybe a smaller addition over here. Reorienting some of the building into more of a STEM suite or a C T suite. But then in talking with Barb and Lath and some of the staff there, looked through the building and said, we made investments in the 2013 referendum in this area that set that area up. Well, they'd like to keep the idea of C T being built here in this location. So then we started thinking through, okay, how would you accomplish that? What would you do? In the referendum, we also talked about the fact that gymnastics gym was needed as part of this plan. We had said if we build more gym space as part of maybe a potential community center or gym expansion, potentially we could take over the existing or the old game gym and turn that into gymnastics and look at it. But we started looking at projects that we've done together with ICS and Shisago Lakes and Monticello and Worthington where we built gymnastics gyms. And those are about 9,200 square feet for the whole gymnastics layout and spectators. And we kept with the idea, you know, instead of building a 12,000 square foot C T box, could we build a concrete box that's 9,200 square feet? Outfit it short term for what would be needed for C T with a long term idea that maybe that would be the gymnastics space then over time and then rethought the plan. So this is very much like the referendum with a few changes. We still kept the core of that original 60s building as part of the focus. Still kept C T here, but shifted things over a little bit and said, if we built a space here that long term could be gymnastics, I'll I'll switch over to short term in just a second. Save room for locker expansion, save room for the athletic support pieces, complete the circulation that we need to around that area. That could give us a way of thinking about doing this in phases that moves away from some of these shop buildings. In the short term, Keith would still like to keep these for storage for the district until we have another available use for that. But it sets us up for a long term approach. So Emily, I'll have you switch to the short, short term document. So this is a version that we looked at for how to address those needs. So as I mentioned, this would be, this box up here would be a C T space that would be new, but Leif and company said if we could repurpose one of those two buildings and make that our small engine shop, keep the other one for storage and exterior storage for the track area, we'd still be able to get the circulation built, build a new space out there that we could outfit for C T. And actually, from a phasing standpoint, that's what we were going to do with the gyms anyways, is we were going to put C T in there for a year while we tore down the old buildings and built the shop and then move them out of that space. So it kind of follows that same logic. And build that C T space in a way that still complements the program in this part of the building, but it sets you up long term for the future. On the other side of the building, art needs more space. It's something we've taken a look at. We looked at some options around the 60s building, but said there's a room directly across the Hall of Mark. We took down some of the interior walls, made one larger space and then took over the adjacent space for art room. We could get art what it needs for that program. And then we looked at converting some spaces for private toilets both here and on the upper level building. So some space for four different toilets. So we have some of that gender neutral toilet space within the building, privacy bathrooms and accomplishing those goals. And then we asked our partners at ICS, help us understand the pricing impact that we're looking at here. Can we get this done within the dollar? And as you hear, it keeps scrunching a little bit as we go forward. But the last document we have in the set is more of a scope outline. Pull that one up, Emily, and I'll have Ryan walk you through that a little. And then I'll answer questions because I know it's the first time you've seen.
Yeah. So then moving, moving to the fun part, as Ben mentioned, you know, you're you're kind of in that $5 million potentially available types of funding depending on streams you want to use. Might be able to squeeze that a little bit more and depending on how interest rates really play out a little bit more. And if you quick total up all this here, it's about $6 million. So this is obviously very conceptual and there's a lot of unknowns still factored in here. So when we talk about like $10 construction per square foot and things like that, be conservative, trying to understand, you know, in a very conceptual basis, some of the things there, you know, the conversion of the shop area, the small engines could be very cost friendly if if we, you know, work with the the staff there and understand how little we could maybe do to the existing building that's there. You can see that's a pretty large amount here on this this sheet. So there's still some of those discussions to have. This was kind of a, hey, if if all the pieces fell in place and we could just do all this work, what would we, what would we price it at? Here's what we said. But it doesn't mean that we don't have room to kind of understand and study a little bit more of each of the actual kind of the renovation spaces to get this more in line with the potential available budget. The the three boxes there at the top across the the options, if you will, or or the construction costs. Lease levy is the first one. So that's what would qualify under lease levy budget or funding mechanism. Doesn't all have to go under there, but it it does qualify for that. The next one, C F B stands for cap, capital facility bonds. So you currently are are utilizing that funding stream. Basically, it's taking capital dollars and bonding and using a capital pay bonds, similar in the way that you would do that with what we do with L T F M. You get L T F M revenue every year, but you're paying bonds. You took a bigger chunk upfront. So that's the same type of mechanism there. Slash capital just means using a chunk of capital if it's a land seller or something like that. And the third one is L T F M using, using those actual revenue streams or revenue dollars to to complete some of that work. And between the art renovation and restroom renovation, you can see it kind of divided up into those specific categories. There's probably some some gray area in there. So we could use a couple of different of those funding streams to cover that style of work as well as the renovation for the shops, small engine. So long story short, trying to show some different funding mechanisms that you have available to you in a very conceptual basis for for what pricing is going at. When we price it down. Good thing is, you know, none of us have a crystal ball what's going to happen on the road with with pricing and things like that. We hear a lot of different things. Projects that I've been involved in in the last two months that have bid have come in right where we want or under budget. So it's, I don't know what that means. I'm not gonna, I couldn't guarantee anything today, but it's, it seems to be maybe some of the unknown and craziness is maybe slowing down. So only kind of tell and and we'll get more of that as we move the ball for sure. So.
As we head into recessions, typically we find that the contractor pricing matches that because there's concern over is there enough work to keep my crews busy to have to stay familiar with that from business. And so we're starting to see that a little bit. There's one other item in this pricing that I'll put on the table, but it's a long shot here is our pricing that we have for the C T edition reflects the new code requirements of a storm shelter that would have thrown the space. If we were doing the previous referendum, that's adding different capacity and things to the building to make that happen. And so we had included that and we are still assuming this as part of this price. We may be able to work with the code officials and say, we are simply replacing outdated metal pole barn building with a concrete structure. It's not storm shelter, but it's also not increasing capacity. Can we build this in the short term not to storm shelter requirements, knowing that if, you know, our long term plan for the high school is to get to the storm shelter requirement and see if they would grant us a leeway on that, which could help lower the cost for scrubbing on that. But right now, we want to assume the worst case scenario, best case scenario is the code is that would be felt the storm. And like I said, that's a long shot.
You know, we all, we know obviously that there's a lot more news. But we also knew that we only had about $5 million ish to consider. So we didn't want to bring anything more to you than was more than that five month. I mean, this is about what we potentially do. And it would really be more of a philosophical approach of a phased in process. Like, yep, we can't do it all at once, but this would be phase one of a long term plan. Is that, now is the time for questions.
Is that where the Spanish classes are now where where they are global art rooms? That's an outside wall, right?
No.
Or it's not an outside wall.
It was back when you were a teacher there. It was an outside wall that's been, it's been enclosed. So this is the old perimeter, the the old square building. It's the former south east corner.
Yeah. So there still won't be natural light.
No. Big solar tube stand.
I see.
Eric, you had a question. If this would be considered phase one, how long would we have to wait to start getting phase two? As far as the lease levy goes, refresh my memory. There's always a cap on how much you can lease levy. Yep. And and every year or every?
It's a enrollment based number. So and this would be next thing you know.
For how long?
Until your enrollment close. And then we pay off these however long the duration of the bond is for this particular. So your current lease levy is for your co-op space, which there isn't that you're just paying to rent that space, right? So that doesn't end as long as you're using this space. It's gonna.
I mean, we we were really optimistic, you know, because there were some things in some of those legislative proposals that would have actually made our number go a bit higher and we could have done it better than work, but it wasn't going to happen. So we got to deal with reality. It it would be, it would be quite some time before, you know, we would be able to do a phase two. I mean, it would be several years. Michelle's not here for, she's got a family commitment, but she'd be able to get you, you know, the exact numbers on how long it would take. It would basically be until we pay some of our debt off that would open up more opportunities for us to do some things. Or eagle or referendum, you know. You know, and if the board thought hypothetically that, you know, now, right now, in the next couple of years, given the economic climate, might not be a great time to go for a referendum. Maybe phase one would be to do what we can now, but maybe five years from now, things would be different. Would be that opportunity for another project. So or, you know, or the board consider, you know, let's, let's just go for a bigger project goal for a referendum. I will tell you now that is something I would not recommend to you as your superintendent. I I just don't know that all the variables we live in the world that we live in is is would be a pretty tough time. Going into a recession and all the unknowns.
How long would it take to complete this project?
To product, to build, it's probably under a year, nine months and build design maybe six months.
Yeah, it's, it's relatively easy build with the box, you know, being attached. So.
Like the work inside, like changing that art room, would that be a big disruption?
No, because you'd do that over the summer.
Oh, I see.
And we've actually talked a little bit with Keith about how much his crews might be able to tackle as part of that.
What's the direct effect to the local taxpayer? Hundred percent. This is
Lease levy.
Lease levy.
Yep.
It's like what we did for northern
That I, you know what, that I don't think we've refreshed those numbers in a while. My, my feeling would be, I use the term very understandably. Relatively small of the impact with this size of a project, you know, if you think about the, the referendum was fifty million plus, almost sixty million. And that was the low teens. So this is gonna be in the single digits, low single digits.
And, and I need that, the board needs to know that the five million dollars would not all be leased levy. Only about two and a half, yeah, a million of it would be lease levy. The rest of it would, you know, we'd be pulling from about four different areas to be able to get that out there. So, yeah. When I don't have the numbers in front of you, it would be pretty small. I mean, it would be
But all of it's local tax.
Five million dollars for twelve throws of square feet.
It's pretty cheap. Couldn't have cheaper if it would have passed a referendum.
The storm shelter requirements.
Yeah, storm shelter, just I was talking to John just before I came up here, that, that box, that top line item that you see there. Uh, we did that size box in Monticello in two thousand eighteen, I believe, this week, seventeen or eighteen. And I just looked back at the bids we received and it was a million five. So we're a million dollars more four years later. But the storm shelter has significant impact on that. Yeah, the way that that structure is built with separate mechanical, separate.
That it
Yeah, it's a different, different. So Vaughn can work magic and, and give them the, let that go. This.
Ballpark, what would that save us? Didn't have to do storm shelter.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna be right around that, that number.
But you know, we're still at the hypothetical stages. In terms of like specific numbers and those kinds of things, if the board, if the board wanted us to move forward, like in, in, in the board was serious about this, then we would put much more effort into getting the exact dollar amounts, you know, you know, everything that you might need.
But let's say that it didn't have to be storm ready, so that'd be an extra million dollars. I mean, would that be pumped into a bigger building then, or how, how would that play into this? Four million dollar project rather than a five or?
Well, uh, we're a little concerned that we're like right up against the edges of that right now. Okay. So you probably talked about, well, how would you use those funds then? Would you look at other areas within the existing building to stretch that further? Would you uh, given the fact that they want to reuse one of those two buildings for small engine in the short term? Uh, we can't take down both those buildings simultaneously and not disrupt the program. So it's probably not making the CTE larger at this point. Uh, it might be that you take a look at some other aspect of it, maybe shift your capital funds away from one thing and look at that for equipment, because the lease levy has limits to what uh you can't buy furniture and equipment with lease levy funds. So we have to have some other funding sources for the equipment that's getting moved, which right now they're planning on moving. If we did this, they'd move most equipment. So I think there'd be a lot of conversations over, okay, well, how we benefit from not having to do that storm shelter. Or the other way to look at it is that size box would be the storm shelter in the future when you did a referendum. You wouldn't have to have the storm shelter requirement. Next time you did the referendum, because you'd be spending it now, because that was part of it before too. So it may just be that you have to look at it as this moves us towards the larger goal of providing a storm shelter for the students.
That's probably important to, to not decide of this dollar amount here, it's almost a direct subtraction from the referendum. What hundred percent as opposed to, okay, we're, we're getting ninety percent or eighty percent of the value. This is, this is all would all be utilized in a referendum scope that is happening now, just kind of just.
And from a, just from a uh community education, he's not community education as a program, but from an education, if you did a referenda, this does give you the opportunity to talk to the community about, we've been taking steps towards writing the bill. Been doing what we can, but we can't get there by taking small steps. We need to do a larger thing. Here's how the plan lays out. This is what it entails for the future. So it gives you opportunities to talk with the community about it and help educate them on what it is that you're doing in the short term to get towards those goals. So you can look at it from a positive.
Beyond just um putting up a new box, the actual space is, will just be the old stuff moved over there.
From an equipment standpoint, yes, uh, unless there's also donations too, and I thought that was something.
So what are we gaining here? We're not we're not actually bringing that space to what today's standard should be.
Uh, well, you are from, from an architecture standpoint, you're gaining quite a bit of square feet. The small engine goes from the small area to the whole building that's in the remaining building is larger than the other uh existing building. So that space gets larger. So you're adding square feet throughout the whole space. You're getting upgraded ventilation, upgraded lighting, you know, all of those features. The equipment is what we can't buy with lease levy. And so that would be the next, you know, component to accomplish that space.
It's probably a minor thought in, in most cases, but if Keith were here, he'd say, I'm gaining a lot of storage that I need.
Well, and you know, we've all had questions about private restroom options and the desire from our community to have some solutions so that I, I believe that those same concerns will continue. They're not gonna go away and we have made a commitment that that is something we will take serious as a board and, and work towards some solutions.
Yeah, unfortunately, the lease levy screen is the one stream that wouldn't cover any of that particular item, which if you were saving a million dollars on the building, that's only be slightly qualifying. So we can't spend that.
So the I, only the items listed under your lease levy are the ones that would qualify for that.
Right. Easy way to think about lease levy is if you were to default on the loan, they could lease that space up as somebody else say define. Okay, where is it? How would I get access to it? They look at it as an addition onto the building. That's why renovation spaces in terms of don't count for that. Yet something like putting a synthetic turf on a football field does, because you can say, well, that's a space. It's leased here. It's classroom. I can count that. So it's the clarification around lease levies. It's a little loose, but specifically you don't necessarily need to. And I've always scratched my head over. So you can build a capacity addition with lease levy, but you won't let them buy furniture to put in. How are you supposed to use it for that?
And another option would be, I'm just gonna throw everything out. If the board didn't want to do anything for CTE now, um, we could still look at options for the, the private restroom uh issues that we have, because we would be using different funds for that anyhow.
These three items really are all a card.
This was one of the academies, right?
Yeah, I, I think what would also happen uh with all of this is the high school would probably repurpose lots of the space down that corridor and move classrooms and try and design a whole corridor area that would be called our career academy to have kind of the CTE courses down in one section of the building. That's something that we've talked about as well. So some of those um classes on that outside wall gym that you over the two big Spanish and some English or some of those. You know, maybe they potentially would move into other academic classrooms in different spots and and then we would move more career technical kinds of classes.
Yeah, a lot there.
So a lot of what it does, but
So what would be the, the next steps and maybe see the tax impact?
We can get, we can get exact tax impact.
Could be nice to see that, just to, you know, see what that bottom knowledge can do to that.
Like we don't need approval for this right from the voters.
All right. Now, this is, this would be a way for the board to move on a, a major project um without going to the voters and something that we could do fairly quickly.
But we still have to explain, like, when we do go up the levy, well, we did this, right? I mean, like your ideas for us using that as a communication. And you know, we're gonna lower it really by this much, right? The free spend.
I guess another question would be, how long does this tie us up to not do other projects? You know? If we're really boxing ourselves in to do other projects if an emergency or something came up.
I don't know that we can use the lease levy to do like, if an emergency came up. I don't know that that's for
No, but if you're rocking up lease levy for five years, that's
But I think the lease levy is for new square footage, right?
It's for addition, yeah, new square footage on a building. So
So it depends on which of the three different funding sources you're, you're logging. But, but to your point, it's a good point is that the funding stream of the long-term facility maintenance piece tying that those dollars up into this project would uh limit us on issues that come up, right? That's the money that we generally use for roofs and parking lots and HVAC and those kinds of things.
Are there private toilet issues at the buildings? Do we have a need?
Well, the high, the high school is the area that we get the most concerns. I would definitely say the middle school is an area that we need to consider as well.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if we had them there already or.
I believe, I believe like that building was designed very traditional bathrooms. I don't know that we have much for private. Private's biggest editor.
And most districts have done is you start with the low hanging fruit and you take staff bathrooms that are already single stall and repurpose some of it. It's a labeling exercise. So you can start with that and then you take a look at what's, you know, what's next for easy to convert. It's not where you're making full cell renovations.
Crazy money dollars. They had a toilet outside the full current building.
You could, although it has to be related to capacity, although we could, as you're doing it, an addition, you could say, we need restrooms with that and so like
I couldn't just put eight bathroom, call it a lease levy. It also has to provide educational and
Yeah, provides a need.
Okay, so I have two, I have a tax impact that how long uh does, what would this impact us in terms of other projects and how long would that tie us up? That would be mostly the long-term facility maintenance. And when we had just done that, when we did the full renovations, that's how, how we bonded that for five years, was it? Where we
You're on kind of an eight-year bond.
Eight-year, okay.
Yeah, which is coming up in a couple of years.
So it would be the next step if, if the board said, let's try.
I'll always like flash that a little bit more and people look at what that is, have conversations with colleagues and see if there's any leeway on uh our storm shelter requirements, uh get more concrete numbers, look at the schedules and development privilege. So just take it to the next step from a project perspective. Right now, it's fairly diagrammatic, obviously.
It, it can move as fast as you all want it to move, basically.
Well, you can't say, can you have it in place for the fall?
Yeah. A lot of that's the drawing stuff, otherwise.
Well, you know, there's, there's a couple of ways we could do it. I mean, we can uh put it on our next month's agenda for further discussion that will allow each of the board members to investigate this further, send emails, questions that you have that we can send to you, or we can get those answers for you. So you get, you get all the answers to the questions that you have, so that you can make an informed decision. And then we just have to take a look at, you know, the protocol, I guess, the board protocol that we would need to use to have the board bolster, if you will, on, on moving forward with this project. And uh, then we would go full C E S. And, and, you know, we, we could, you know, utilize our committee structure to, to have our long-range planning to provide a lot of leadership to and kind of like uh the committee to kind of move the project forward if the board, you know, wanted this to happen.
I really like the, the concept and I think, I mean, I don't need to wait till next month to think about it. Not ready to get more details.
I have to. It isn't going away.
No, we knew that when we went over the referendum. So what I mean, this gives us a way to at least do something.
Would there have to be a lot of equipment, new equipment purchased for this?
Well, our, our industrial tech teacher indicated that there, that a lot of our equipment is in good shape. I mean, it's, it's old. It's not brand new, but that would be something that we would start with what we have. We would put together a plan on how we could enhance that. We would try and work with different places to get some donations and those kinds of things. We have had uh local businesses inquire about donating things. And quite frankly, we have had to deny some of those because we didn't have the space to take the equipment. Now, I'm not really worried about having the equipment. It might not be the brand new fancy shiny equipment, you know? But it's the equipment that will get the job done.
So how much more extra space then would that shop, uh, would they have to work with? From, uh, from what they have now to what they could have?
About three to four thousand more square feet than what exists.
Three or four thousand more.
We'd have some solutions for art, which, you know, that's been an issue with you've been in those art rooms, small rooms.
Where you're gonna have to hire an art teacher in a year. You don't wanna use that killing room there to entice somebody to come. Good grief. Say hello. There's no one watching.
Well, I mean, if, if, if the board, we can, we can, this is, this is concept conceptual. I mean, if the board wants, we have put an agenda item on next month. Um, and we can get more detailed and I've worked with these folks and the finance people and elders and, you know, get things pretty tight.
If, um, if this, if this does go forward, the, the new building, which on the original plan is the gymnastics. Are you, are we gonna tell them that eventually it will be gymnastics? It's only gonna be what you're also?
I think you'd probably describe it as that we're, uh, in the future, it could easily be converted to additional uh gym space.
Just because we don't
Have to describe it for anything.
No, I know.
We have to decide what we're gonna do.
But people still have still can get their hands on the original.
Well, actually, the, the referendum one does not label that gymnastics. Remember, we're gonna put it in the old existing gym. We looked at some different versions. So we're trying to think of, okay, this does give you some options. If you want to have a gymnastics, you could, we want to make sure the box is the right size instead of going, oh, we only made that house is pretty big.
I don't think we have to explain ourselves to anyone.
Well, I've
They had a chance to go off.
Don't say that this is, if you don't present it, that's eventually this could be transferred.
This is gonna be the shops. I say, I'm, I'm ready to just say, yeah, let's vote and let's do the dang project. So, I mean, yeah, my blessing. Well, it's under an information item.
Yeah.
So we, I mean, we
Themselves already.
We can, we can prepare to have something more tight presented at the next board meeting. And in, if uh, if chair, you know, would like to, we can uh have this on as an action item. And you know, then you have And then you have, at the next board meeting, and then you have to be prepared to go, put your nickel down.
Um, I want to see what the tax, I see for that. Which I know it's like.
I think we're gonna have to go up to our referendum then.
We're not gonna go referendum pass, that's the thing. Well, do we have enough information?
I think we should go for a referendum again, right now, but no one's ever gonna do it. I guess the the question I would have is, does the location, everything make sense, people like that there, the the approach seems is correct.
You're pretty much talking about, so the two bathrooms are, you know, they're just stacked.
Yep.
I heard before, you know.
Down near stairs, and both floors, that's easy.
Yeah, I agree, on referendum sooner than later, but. We had like the best referendum possible, and it got shot down.
You have to, you know, when we went to the. In January, you know, and they had.
And it's a museum.
Yeah, you know, they had that one school there, and it was on its third time, and. That's how they got it passed, was they just kept going.
I was just gonna say.
We had a long.
There's no doubt that our district has a longstanding history of having multiple times to go to the voters. I think the variables, we're in the one of the most uncertain times, uncertain times in most people's lifetime that they'll ever go through. And, you know, definitely not in the in the near future, I mean. That's all people talk about, gas prices, inflation, you know, these names, right, we don't need to feed dead whores, but. I don't think, I think we'd be foolish to think that people are gonna say, sure, let's, let's vote for a tax increase right now. Maybe maybe in three or three to five years.
Good.
Maybe in three to five years, yes, but. We don't know what that's.
Trying to get re-elected, Mr. Minks?
There's gonna be people that want like this.
Yeah, there will be.
I am listening, who cares how much it costs?
Asking us such stupid questions.
Who gives a crap how much it costs? Like, we 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 had the most minimal tax impact referendum possible, a hundred and eighteen dollars for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house.
I'm just.
That is minimal.
I'm not saying I'm against it.
If this is gonna be five dollars, are you worried about a taxing back, come on?
I am worried about it.
Ridiculous.
You're ridiculous.
All right.
Let's move on, let's move on.
Everybody gets a chance to vote, next meeting, we'll have it on the agenda. Any other questions?
I I am. I'm very supportive of CTE, but it just always seems like we we go all level below all the time, instead of. Like, doing it right the first time, and that's just where my hesitation, but it's that versus waiting for, you know. Three years or five years and. So. It seems like. We have a history of that as well, and doing what we should do or could do. And when you're looking at that career tech. If we're not gonna be putting those kids in what they need. Yes, we're giving building space, but they also gotta have those tools, that industry is booming, and it's changing.
Well, it's a, it's a shame where they have to work right now, it's embarrassing.
And that is true. It's weighing that.
Well, this would be an opportunity to for the board to do something with what our only option would be to do something. And and I, you know, regardless of if the board, you know, chooses not to move forward with this hypothetical project. I will still advocate that we work to find solutions for the private bathroom. Issues that we have in our district. So I would just ask each of you to think about this, please send specific questions that you have, and we will try and have something prepared to, you know, present to you. So I'll be in, I must be in touch here in the next couple of days, and we'll discuss our next steps.
It sounded like you talked with the CTE people, I mean, you talked with the art people.
Only only with Bart.
Okay.
That's really briefly with them and. Very, very enthusiastic perspective understanding.
It's hard to walk to the high school without people going, what are you doing here, what's going on?
Thank you. Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, we'll move on to ten B, the first reading of policy, and there is a summary of changes, and Don, do you have any comments? Or do you have any questions for Don for the first reading of policies? The activities program did go to committee and that, so that's already been taken care of. Anything else, any other questions or? Or Don or that?
And these will be brought forward for action next.
July. Okay, and we'll move on to Tennessee, the Minnesota State High School League membership resolution, and there are. There's a video link there, while we play, asking you to look at that on your own time. It's part of the handout and then part of the talking points, and those other two things that are attached there. Kind of a commission for them, I don't know if you're maybe, I don't know, you're on a committee to speak to that at all.
No, this is just something I need to do every year to be part of the high school league.
Yep, and Hassan has an information item, so you have plenty of time to read up on that if you'd like.
Yeah.
We're sure with what?
It's listed twice on the agenda.
Oh, that resolution is the same as what's in the information.
Right, right. I'm wondering if it wasn't on the information part because of the. The video, and they want you to like have some conversation about that, like those those talking points before you vote. Yeah, so. A little more education, I think, this time. So if there's any more questions on that.
When our, we have a veteran board, you've you've approved this every year.
Right. Right, so then we'll move to number eleven, the action part of the meeting, and I would entertain. A motion to approve the Minnesota State High School League membership resolution. Motion made by Eric Minks.
Second.
Second by Eric Strandberg, is there any further discussion? During then, all members say hi, all in favor say aye. And a close same sign, motion carries. And then a resolution for extension of dates for filing affidavits of candidacy, I'm entertaining a motion for that. A motion made by Don, seconded by Chad, is there any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor say aye, opposed same sign, motion carries. The next one is eleven C, the twenty-two, twenty-three budgets.
I'll speak to this, Michelle sends your regrets. Right, so that's good. This has been shared with the board probably half a dozen times or more, it's gone through finance committee several times. We've spoken at each of our board meetings, and we've tried to brief you with any changes that have or refinements that have transpired since we talked to you last. I will share with you that the only refining or modification that we've made since we talked last. Was that we were able to finalize our coding as it relates to COVID- nineteen funds. And we have approximately one-point-eight million dollars in this budget that we're asking you to adopt that will be quoted to COVID. This, we will be adopting a budget that has approximately a one-point-six-million-dollar deficit spending, which is something that historically we have done in our district. We don't know how much longer we'll be able to do that, we all know that things are getting tighter, we have been able to underspend our budget. Historically, however, it's getting much more difficult for us to be able to do that, I'll give you an example. You know, last year, for example, we did expend about a hundred percent of our budget. We turned out okay, because our revenue was much higher than what we had in our budget, so our expenditures hit a hundred percent, which is something that we typically hadn't done. But thankfully, our revenues were able to offset that. And we should have an idea on this budget that we are just ending on where we're gonna land, it does appear that we will end up at about a hundred percent of expenditures. But we're will be rectifying all of the revenue pieces, and we should be able to get that by mid-July to share with you. We're fairly optimistic that our revenue will come in higher than what we have projected. But of course, enrollment really is the biggest driver of that, and we feel like we were somewhat conservative on the enrollment in the budget. So, this, you know, you've seen this many, many times. And and have had opportunities to ask lots of questions, this is the month where you actually approve the budget, so we're asking the board to make a motion. Second, make the vote, so we adopt our budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school.
I move to accept the budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three school.
Motion made by Jim, is there a second?
Sure.
Second by Eric Minks, any just further discussion? We'll vote by roll call, starting with Chad.
Yes.
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 Yes, motion carries, there are no additions to the agenda, the future meetings, finance will meet on the nineteenth at four-thirty and. Regular work session at six P M, we'll entertain a motion to. Have someone read the motion to close the meeting at this time.
I'll bring a motion to close the meeting this time.
Can you read that?
Make a motion to close a board meeting to receive confidential legal advice.
To the attorney-client privilege of Minnesota Statute Section thirteen D point oh-five subdivision three B. Move to go into closed session to receive confidential legal advice, is there a second? Second, second by Deb, a discussion.